And of course, South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-4-80E, South Carolina Code, 1987, as amended, all the meeting, the meeting area have been notified with the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. Uh, well now, Ms. Gore, could you give us our prayer, followed by the pledge by Mr. Reed?
Let us bow our heads, please. Dear God, please give us strength on today, oh God. Please let us know, God, that your grace is sufficient. We come right now, God, just to lean upon you. We ask you to give us the wisdom that we need, the courage to go forth, God, to make the tough decisions, but the right decisions. We ask everyone that's here today that you are blessed and your household is blessed. In Jesus' name, we give you all praise and glory. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Sub move.
Second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do we have any citizens' comments? No citizens' comments, that's fine. All right, consent items, we have minutes for May 8, and the minutes for our board meeting was on May 8, and our work session was on May 22.
So Chair Hanslow, there was a mistake made with the upload of the minutes, so we are reconciling that as of the end of this meeting. The 2023 minutes should be there at the end of this meeting instead of the 2022 minutes.
So it's further than May 22nd, 2023, which if you have the link...
Yes.
The link is correct. The attachment has the wrong minutes attached. So if we motion to approve the link, the May 22nd, 2023?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we took both those together? Did you have both those together?
Aye.
All right, looks like we have some awards tonight, some awards, honors awards and recognitions. Um, afternoon, would you like to...
Sure, so I'm gonna have actually Mr. Shure, uh, who is our new executive director for administration and operations for the school district, has some athletic awards to talk to us about.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
If you want to take the time out to recognize some of our student athletes this evening, we have two student athletes that earned the spots of, uh, on the South Carolina Coaches Association of Women's Sports, the 2023 All-State Softball Teams this school year. We have two, and we ask that you give them a round of applause as we call their names and we ask that they come up and take official, our superintendent and our board chair. First, we have, uh, from Hartsville High School, representing 4A softball, Ms. Maya Harvey. Next, we have, uh, representing 3A, uh, representing Darlington High School, Ms. Elena Williamson.
All right, parents, any, any pictures from parents? We will hold the post.
All right, next, we have three Darlington County student athletes that earned the spots of on the South Carolina Coaches Association of Women's Sports for the 2023 World South All-Star Game. We have three individuals to represent Darlington High School. We ask that you give them a round of applause as I call their name. First, we have Ms. Caitlin Church from Darlington High School. And Ms. Elena Williamson also from Darlington High School. And for 4A, representing Hartsville High School, we have Ms. Caitlin Thompson. And for 4A, representing Hartsville High School, we have Ms. Caitlin Thompson. All right, next, we have two student athletes who earned the spots on the South Carolina Baseball Coaches Association, making the North and South All-Star Baseball Teams. Representing Darlington High School, we have Shamar Simes, representing 3A. Representing 4A, we have Mr. John Alexander, representing Hartsville High School.
Congratulations. I'm glad you're in summer, that makes you feel good. Ready, good?
Let me get one more then, Eddie.
All right, next, we have outstanding seniors. I'm gonna pass the mic to Mrs. King.
Mrs. King. All right, good evening. We have two specific academic awards or academic recognitions that we are going to have tonight. The first one is for outstanding seniors. These particular seniors graduated this year, and they graduated in some very special program, whether it was with an advanced degree or with a specialty in a certain career path. The first one is our Darlington High School Early College Program, Honors Program. This is a partnership with Florence Darlington Tech. These students graduated with an Associate of Science or an Associate of Arts or both degrees. First student is Madeline Marino. Our second student, and she graduated with both, excuse me. Kansas Cassidy graduated with Associate of Arts. Sierra Hamm graduated with both, Associate of Science and Associate of Arts. Stephanie Stewart graduated with both, Associate of Science and Associate of Arts. Amber Towns graduated with both, Associate of Science and Associate of Arts. And our final student in this particular category is Carolina Watson with an Associate of Arts. Principal is Ms. Courtney Kirk.
Congratulations. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Oh, Ms. Garrett, you're up here. Ms. Garrett?
Yep, got some with and some without.
One more?
Our second program that we recognize students in was the IB Program, International Baccalaureate Program. These students graduated with both of them. Our first student, and this, excuse me, and this particular program is at Hartsville High School. Our first student is Melissa Garrett. Our second student is Emily Herring. And our final student in this program, Margarita Ricardo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have four students from Mayo High School who have participated in the Accelerate Program, which is an engineering program in partnership with the governor's school. And those four students are Gracie Driggers. And Sabrina Lynn. And principal is Stephanie Leonard.
One more, one more, one more.
Hold that smile.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second recognition for this evening, academic recognition for the evening, is twelve graders who have had all As for 12 years. We've got students from two schools represented tonight, Hartsville High School and Mayo High School for Math, Science, and Technology. We'll start out with Hartsville High School. Our first student is Catherine Baffet. Lily Calibres. And Newer Trader. Principal, Ms. Corey Louie.
Yep.
Thank you.
This is definitely worth it.
Thank you. Our second set of students from Mayo High School for Math, Science, and Technology, who had all As, Shelby Copeland. Esther Power. Hillary Garland. And Hannah Jewell.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to our student parents for the recognition for this, thank you.
All right, and again, parents, thank you, thank you. This would not be possible without what you've done for them all of these years, all of the programs. Yes, feel free to leave now so you can enjoy your summer, but we thank you for being here tonight. And again, congratulations to all of our students.
All right, we'll head back into the rest of our meeting. Policy items, we have policy, ARGCC.GDC. Anyway, paid parental leave.
And so Chair Hassler, members of the board, members of our audience, this was signed into law on May 12 by Governor McMaster, and it actually takes effect on June the 26th. And so we have to have a policy in place to address this. This is, this is just a part of our administrative rule. So we have a leave policy, and then we have an administrative rule to cover like FMLA, you know, processes for vacation, and this will just be attached to that as far as the paid parental leave. But essentially, this allows for up to six weeks for the maternal parent and up to two weeks for the paternal parent, and then also allows for adoption as well. And so I think you all have had a chance to see some of the draft administrative rule. And of course, there are some decisions that we have to make from that draft. And so, you know, again, one of those decisions is that we can either allow people to take leave during the school year, or if leave, if somebody goes out on maternal or paternal leave at the end of the school year, allow them to pick that back up the following school year. So the choice is either to say that we only will allow, you know, that six weeks during the actual school year and not have it move from one school year to the next, or that we allow it to also take place the following school year, if that takes place at the end of the previous school year or during the summer and moves into that. So that is one of the decisions that the board needs to make. And then the other decision is they talk about contractual term, and again, after the summer, similar to what the language is in the first part of it as well, they talk about the contractual term of it for both the paternal and maternal and the adoption piece. So I will tell you, there's a lot of conversation out there with school districts trying to understand this. There was a frequently asked question from the State Department that they put out. It, I don't think it necessarily answered a lot of our questions that we had, unfortunately. And so there are some questions, and we have been told that because of the tight line that they passed this, there could be changes to this after this year as well. So that we may have something in place this year, but they could change it at the legislators next year. So I think the key thing is to have something in place for us to have to cover our employees for this school year and then anticipate some potential changes. So that is. This is just first reading, so of course, anything that we discuss tonight and pass on first reading, we certainly can change between now and second reading. That is possible if we get additional information or additional advice from our attorneys or guidance from the State Department. So we are able to make any changes from the first reading tonight.
Do we know what other school districts are doing? Has anyone passed this yet?
They have, and it's kind of a mixture, truthfully. It's a mixture. Some districts have passed allowing it to carry over to the next school year, and some districts have not.
And just for clarification for the, the read of it, this, it does not specify maternal or paternal. It's basically the primary caregiver.
Right.
Just, so, and if you have both parents who are working within the district, one can claim six weeks and one can claim two weeks.
That is correct.
Just for.
Yes, that is, that is correct.
So just for clarification purposes. So one would have to be identified as the primary caregiver. It could be either or. That would get the six weeks, but only one gets the six.
That's only if both are in the school district.
Correct.
Otherwise, the mother is the maternal lead. If there's not both in the district, she would get six.
Yep, that's correct.
Yep.
If they're not both in the district. No, that's not what you're saying, anyway.
But it also says days of paid paternal leave taken under this policy must be taken consecutively, exception of foster parents may request or receive approval of paternal leave in not consecutive one-week time periods. So that would say right there where there are certified staff members or classified staff, as long as they have to be taken consecutively.
That's correct.
So that wouldn't fall under, if it was under the same school year, starting one school year to the next, because it's still consecutive, correct?
That's not the way the attorneys and the state folks are interpreting that right now.
It doesn't, and also because, like, for instance, if you were to leave, like, if you had a baby the last week before Christmas break, it doesn't include that, those kinds of breaks?
That's correct, so.
During the school year. The only decision we have to make is under the summer.
That's right. It's in addition to any normal breaks that we have. So if, you know, somebody goes out for parental leave before spring break, it's the two weeks plus the six weeks. So it does not include, you know, regular holidays and paid time off that we have.
So can I ask, can I ask Mr. Miller? You know, this is a policy that you'll have to enforce. How do you, or do you have a feeling one way or another? What would be most acceptable, you know, to the employees and how they would feel?
As far as when the break?
Yeah, whether they should have that leave continue in the following school year or not.
I think the only thing for you really to consider is consistency. So if you, if you allow it to resume when the school year comes back, that will ensure that everyone will equally get the full six weeks, as opposed to it cutting short and then you come back like you normally would. On the other side of that coin, well, that's the big kicker. But do you want, are you gonna hold folks to the power for coming back in July? It's really a matter of whether you want everyone to have the exact same number of days every time they do this.
That's the way, that's how I've been leaning as well personally, is that we need to be consistent.
Yeah, and it's, you know, you.
But is it about the time off or is it about the pay? I mean, you know, I mean, I get it, I mean, I get it that it is paid time off, and so you can't pay, you know, somebody who has a baby two weeks before the end of the school year, and they only get paid for two weeks. But, so that's really, I mean, I'm not as caught up on the paying, because I don't know if you can get away, that you can avoid, but then, you know, do the, does the pay and the days have to go along with each other? You know what I'm saying? Does it?
Yeah, they do. You know, if you think about this, it was, there was somewhat of an inequity before where if somebody had a child in the summer, they were never in danger of being docked pay, right? But if they had a child in the school year. But if they had a child in the school year and they didn't have enough medical days, then they were docked pay. So there was kind of an inequity that was already in place. If you, if you, if you had a child in the summer, you never crossed that bridge about whether you were going to lose money or not. This kind of flips it, right? This just flips that inequity technically. Is that, you know, if all of a sudden people didn't get to go from the last two weeks to the first four weeks, then, then they're not being treated as equitably as the folks that are during the school year. They get the full six years worth of leave. So it, you know, we had an inequity before. And this potentially could create another inequity. Or we could just say it's consistent. But I will tell you, the impact on the classroom is different. So, you know, when you don't have somebody to start the school year, that potentially could start the school year, that's the difficult part about this.
I mean, we're, we are not, we're not attorneys. And I, I mean, I think Columbia, they should have made this decision. They should not have left this up to our discretion. Because then every district's going to be doing it different. And that doesn't, that's not.
Is this, is this a paid mandate or an unpaid mandate?
It's unpaid.
I'm sure it's unpaid. You're not going to pick a bill.
Unfunded.
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 Correct. So, yeah. How, a pro, and this is just.
I was going to say, if this had have happened this past year, it would have affected, if you're talking about the primary parent, it would have affected 28 of our employees.
28 of our employees.
28 employees, six weeks of substitute. About what, what does that cost?
Well, more than that, because we weren't paid. They were using their leave time to take their time off.
If we were, it was to be about 30 people again.
The lowest person on the total poll, the first year teacher, it's a certified position. If we had 30 go out, it could cost us a quarter of a million dollars, 225,000. It's about 7,500 per, that's, but it just depends on where they are. We, I mean, I don't know. Their contention was we already had the substitutes in our budget, but.
It's not just that.
You know, we didn't really, I mean, we had some in there, but. It's going to cost us, and there's a lot of districts that have gone to bat, you know, arguing that they should have funded this.
So I mean, I really, I mean, I, I keep leaning back to just doing what, what's consistent. I mean, I know it's going to cost us money, but we can only pay teachers so much. And this is a step in the right direction for our employees, for employees. I mean, I know, I completely agree with you that it's hard to start a school year with substitute. My kids have, one of my child, you know, one of my kids went through that in elementary school where they had to substitute for several weeks before teacher came in. And I do agree that that could be troublesome. But how many of those 28 would have resulted in, in that kind of scenario? I mean, I think it's better to be, to do the right thing by our employees and roll the dice a little on how that shakes out because you're doing, but that's, I'll stop talking.
You don't know what that number will look like when this, once this goes into law.
We can have that right now for you, though. How many would have been classroom, how many not?
Right, I mean, I'm just about, I mean, I'm just trying. This, and too, this modernizes maternity and paternity leave for our state. I mean, that's a good thing. There's a lot of corporations that are, that are moving, moving that way. And I think everybody on this board probably didn't have those kinds of options. And so it's sort of foreign to us to think like that. But that's a much more modern approach, and I think it's good for families. So yes, it might not be great for those individual kids in that class, but it's good for families overall. I'll stop talking.
I'd be willing to bet you next year, the state will come back and say, we have to pay all equally. I'd be willing to bet you.
It's going to go to the courts at some point.
But that's why I understand why they didn't just do that now. I mean, why they did, because they don't like making the hard, they don't make the hard decisions.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean.
They put that on us. I don't know, you decide.
Well, I agree. And I bet you they'll come back next year.
Frankly, I don't know, you decide. Here's, here's your two options, though.
Oh, yeah.
Choose one or the other. Well, how do we split tonight?
Well, I mean, if we choose, it'll shake out in the long run, nothing to decide before us.
I think to everybody's point, no matter what you choose, there's a downside.
Yeah.
Right? So, so again, if you think from an equity standpoint, if somebody has a child in the summertime, they're going to get that summertime, plus they're going to get leave during the school year. Whereas if you have a child during the school year, it's that six weeks. So time with the child is what I'm saying, you know, personal time with your child.
But that's also not up to us when they have their child.
No.
Like, we have to be, provide an equal opportunity for six weeks of vacation if they choose to have their child in the summer.
What, what's the, what is the, the law, the rule, I mean, the, the date that this has to be?
June 26th.
Everybody in the state right now is trying to decide. And nobody knows what the other person's doing.
Well, we can approve for first reading now and still change it if we decide.
That's right.
Yeah, but are you asking us to make a decision on which, which way we're going? We're going to do that for first reading?
Yep.
Yep.
We can change it.
And the state's liable to change it again next year.
So we don't know what anybody else is doing.
Well, like I said, I, I do know that Ori County voted to allow people to extend it into the next school year.
With their billion point seven budget?
Correct. There are some other districts that have options.
Nobody else closer around you, you don't know what's going on? Any feelings?
A lot of the smaller districts won't be able to afford to do that.
The what?
Some of the smaller districts won't be able to afford to do that.
But they don't have to, right?
Not, I mean, they'll have to pay it during.
I mean, they could decide if you have it over the summer, but.
I don't know. I guess they would be curious to know what percentage of the budget are we talking? You know, I mean, it's still a tiny bit of our budget. And it's, and it's a meaningful thing.
As of now, because you have to use sick leave when you, I mean, a lot of people, a lot of teachers plan their wedding, their birth of their children over a time where they wouldn't have to take that kind of time off. You don't know.
Which we all had to do. But now they, now that we can make it better so that they don't have.
Right, I'm just saying, you can't, I don't know that we can predict what kind of budget impact it has. But I mean, we're going to have to do it.
We'll know after a year, and then we can change the rules.
We're going to have to do it, well, we're going to have to do what they say, period. You talk about craziness. Let's do, do it one way for a year and then change it. I think that's probably not the right approach. I mean.
One of my colleagues said, take a close look at how many of your classroom teachers are under 30? And that would be a good kind of, it's possible to project anyway. And I don't have that for you tonight, but I can next time.
I wouldn't even say under 30. I'd say under 35. Yeah.
I may not.
But this is the kind of thing, this is the kind of benefit that you can, that you can have a big impact to people's morale. And they're like, they're, you know, we're talking about recruiting people. This is the kind of thing that you can say, so, I mean, almost like if the districts around us didn't do that and we did, that puts us a leg up, right? Like, you do the thing that's like.
All right, let's just, let's kind of remember if anybody else has anything else to say. Jamie, anything on this?
You know, mine's more that in general, which I was saving kind of for the board member input, but it obviously follows this, that's why I was holding it in terms of, we need to be very conscious of how we're spending money right now. If you pay attention to the last 20, 36 months with Ezra funds, how, I guess, I don't want to say free, but money has been thrown out there in all industries, but especially in education through Ezra funds and everything else, we're finding ways to spend it. We're bringing on staff, and at some point, we're going to have to let those staff go. We discussed when we did that, that's going to be a difficult thing to let staff go. You've gotten accustomed to it. All for benefit for the teachers and being better than everyone else around you to attract good teachers. I'm just saying, from an economic standpoint going forward, I think we've got some tough times coming and we need to be paying attention to every little bit we say. You say it's a small portion of your budget, what percentage of the budget? You add that, keep adding the other things such as the bonuses we do every year, and then your bonus, the signing bonuses, the retention bonuses, all those are great programs. I voted for them, all for it. But at the same time, unfortunately, we're going to have some hard decisions to make in the next 18 months. And I don't think, I think it'll be 12 to 18, you'll see a lot of changes. And a lot of changes in the education industry, period. As you see, we continue to talk about our population and our schools going down. With that goes funding, okay? And we are spending a lot of money on recurring expenses. Not one timers, it's recurring expenses, and they all add up. We just have to take a global look at this. And obviously, she does that all the time. But it's a hard thing to do when she's working with money that she doesn't know what she's got from month to month, year to year, but really month to month in most cases. So I'm just telling us, just be careful. Every little bit keeps adding up, is all I'm saying. I'm not saying I'm not in favor of it, but it could be a large figure. And all of these combined are a large figure. If you pay attention to what we've been doing over these last three years.
Warren?
Yeah, I'd be right now in favor of extending it for this one year, to see how it goes. But I'm not, I wouldn't be adverse to changing it, we need to.
I'm looking at it as, it's a tough decision to make, but we got to look at it as being a fair decision to our employees to make. I know, um, this will draw and keep good teachers when we implement this program. Money wise, budget wise, it's tough right now. Tough decision to make. But I want to be fair.
Well, me personally, uh, I believe it's just run concurrent and straight through, not picking back up, because they're going to have that summer break. And I'm looking at it from a financial standpoint. And we're pushing funds out left and right. And sooner or later, you're, you're going to get some bad spots financially if we keep doing it.
Do we have any more discussion that we thought?
I mean, I, I'm, I'm worried about what the people, I'm worried about it from a, what is, what does everybody else do? Which is why I think, again, it's ridiculous that the state didn't make this decision. I mean, this is about a law, so you should not, there should not be options in it.
It's a funded law with that.
Right, it should have been clear and we should have gotten the direction from how to implement this new law and not, well, you can decide, because I don't, I think that puts us in a position where that's a very hard decision. I mean, I mean, so what happens if, so a, a person goes out on leave before the end of the year and they've not resigned their contract? Do we, we have to pay them for six weeks? I mean, or they, their contract ends at the end of the school year and they only get paid through that? Well, that doesn't seem, that's not fair either. I mean.
That would not, because their workdays would end at the end of that contract, so that, that would.
Well, don't, do their workdays not end? They go, they have a little hiatus right there and, over summer, right? I mean, that's not really, those aren't workdays either. That's what I'm saying, I mean, there's too many hits, what is?
Does the law, I mean, because it says it has to be done within a 12 month period from the occurring event. So say someone has the child in May. They use two weeks of their own paid time off and then request their maternity leave or their, or their parental leave at the beginning of the school year. They've taken no time. And so that they ask for it to start. And because, I mean, that's another scenario, I mean, which is, it doesn't mean they started it and then they picked it back up. They hadn't started until, until July.
The law says 12 months. I think we're going to be at the losing end if we don't extend it. I think the state's going to ultimately come back and say we have.
But if they, if it's so clear cut that that's a law, why don't they just write it like that?
And for state employees, it is that.
Okay, that's a good point.
So the state, so.
But, but, but they're on.
They're on a work schedule. They're on a 12 month work schedule.
So they were following a model of the 12 month on state employees.
And not understanding what it looks like.
That they have that break.
Yep.
Then you want to touch, this is what it was.
Yeah, neither do I.
Well, I know, I agree.
I don't want to touch it either.
We're going to be the bad guy one way or the other, right?
Somebody's going to lose out.
Yeah, somebody will, yeah.
Either way.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we approve first reading as the administrative rule stands as it is tonight.
It can't stand as it is because we've got two options. We've got to pick one.
You have to make a pick one. Because it's got to be go or, and it says both, it says one or the other.
I mean, we have to pick one or the other.
All right. Well, we try my last statement.
I think you were trying.
Well, we can just choose, you can just choose it. I make a mo, I want to make a motion? I can make a motion, I can choose one. We can try, vote.
I'll make a motion, we approve it with the extension of the leave.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the table, we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
So when would second reading be?
July is the next time we.
No, but this has got to start.
We do, we're, we'll probably have to do something.
We'll have to do a special call to get. Capacity as it is.
We might be able to work that around the 20 second, even not do the full meeting as a call meeting. Do, you could do, you know, the work session for part of it, or we could just do special call and we approve at the 20 second as well.
And I'd really like to see how some of our local districts are voting on this also, how they're doing.
Between now and then, we absolutely can get you that. Because everybody's, some people are meeting this week, some people are meeting next week. It's just kind of random around the state.
We just have to start something.
I think we should, see, we have to try and be consistent with what our local area, I mean.
I, I mean, Florence, if I'm not mistaken, is extending it to the next year. So that is another one.
Florence already offered it.
Right, already, yeah.
Florence was already doing paid. They were already doing it.
And so under their existing program where they went out on their own and did it, they extended leave from the end of one school year to the next?
Yes.
I don't know that we have choice.
We've got a motion in a second, so we just.
We're, we're discussing. Y'all ready to call that vote?
We're going to discuss it.
All right, we'll call for the vote, all in favor of the motion. Are we, are we voting?
Ah, I guess. But we're going to look at it some more before we do it again.
Audrey? Get opposed? Motion for first reading passes.
All right, extending, right, okay.
All right. Our, the Board of Education is scheduled for, our education retreat is scheduled for Thursday, June 22nd at 9:00 a.m. at Seneca. That's over in Hart School, and that's in the design room. Our next regular board meeting will be held July the 10th at 6:00 p.m. here in the training room. And we will move on to, we have an update for DCIT. And that will be from Mr. Rodney Seff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening.
I've got some information about our school year and a few things about the future that I wanted to share with you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to discuss those. First of all, I know that one of the primary goals is for us to serve as many students as we can from the district. And I know that was a serious concern in the years prior to my arriving at, at DCIT. 10 years ago, at the end of the year, there were 291 students. And that was a result of the change in schedule and lost teaching positions due to the recession that we were suffering at that time. Over the next few years, we got almost to 700. And then COVID. And that dropped us back down to about 500. And we worked our way back, we finished this year with 656 students. We started out here with about 700, but that happens every year when students fail a class in the fall and have to change their schedule for the spring. Some, some students move, transfer. But 656 is a good number. And that, most of our Level 1 classes are, are full. And so a lot of our Level 2 classes are not full, but they're never going to be completely full because you're never going to have a 100% success rate in terms of students doing very well. Or students who just decided this, this particular area is not for them. So 656 is good. We're, we're heading in the right direction. The year before COVID, we finished with 688. So we're almost back to where we were before the pandemic. The number of completers we had this year was extremely high, 246. And of that 246, 243 students earned, that are, met the career ready criteria that the state of South Carolina requires of graduating seniors. And what that means as far as DCIT is concerned is that they were completers and they earned a industry certification that was on the education oversight list, the CCR list. The other way that students at DCIT can be, excuse me, can be career ready is by completing work-based learning experience such as an internship or apprenticeship. is by completing work-based learning experience such as an internship or apprenticeship. And we have some of that, but typically they were also career-ready based on the fact that they were completers and earned a certification. Starting in the future, that's not going to be in August, but it might be the next August, the state of South Carolina is moving to a tiered model of CCR. And what that's going to look like is students, students who are completers will have the opportunity to stack credentials in order to become career-ready. For instance, if you're a student at DCIT in any programming and you earn your microburst employability skills credential or get your OSHA ten safety certification, then you're right now considered career-ready. Which is great, but I don't think any of us would, would say that those truly make you career-ready. They make you veteran employee, but they don't make you ready to take a job as a welder or as a mechanic. So in the future, they're going to have to have a more career-specific credential. The microburst or OSHA will be what they call a tier one or an introductory credential. But then there are also going to be some intermediates and then some advanced. I'll give you an example of an advanced one would be certain Adobe certifications for somebody going to graphics. Or the AWS welding certification. If you earn that, you're ready to take a job, entry level in, in that field. And so things are going to change. It's going to be a little tougher to start with for students to be career-ready. But we've got some time to prepare. And so I have all of my instructors working on career-specific or industry-specific credentials that we will offer. And unfortunately, we have some money to do that because we, our students have earned so many credentials that we get a significant amount of money from the state from, it's Proviso one A point five six, which is the industry credential, Proviso. And this past year, we got about sixty thousand dollars, which is approximately what we've gotten for the last three or four years. And that money can be used to purchase licenses to get credentials. It can purchase training, curriculum, practice tests for the students. It can pay to train our instructors so they are better, they're, they're better able to prepare students to earn. Those, I get a lot of flexibility there, but it's got to be spent on industry credentials in some way. I mentioned we had two hundred and forty-six completers. They earned seven hundred and twenty industry credentials this year. That's just the completers. Altogether, our students who are at DCIT this past year earned over thirteen hundred and fifty credentials. Some of those are on the EFC list, others are not. But regardless, the ones that are not, that don't make you career-ready, they still count for the student. They still count for the school in terms of our Proviso funding. So I still log those into Power School every year. So the student gets credit for completing those. Going to next year, we're adding a new mechatronics program in August. Really excited about that. Hired a, an experienced teacher. Her name is Wendy Jacobs. She's coming to us from the Columbia area, but prior to that, she taught mechatronics in Sumter at the Sumter Career Center for eight years. So I'm really excited with her experience. We've purchased a lot of new equipment, thanks to Dr. Newman and the board. And it's all been delivered and installed. They're coming back, the vendor is coming back and the new teacher is coming on Thursday to do training. And that's on mechanical, electric, electronic, pneumatic, hydraulic trainers and PLCs. Siemens and Allen Bradley are the two main types of PLCs, which are programmable logic controllers, the computers that run the machinery in manufacturing. And so that's what our students are going to be trained in, is how to use these things. We based the decision to add mechatronics on our industry partners. They were unanimous. They said, we're having trouble finding industrial maintenance technicians. We need them. We want you to produce them. And Florence Darlington Tech is hearing the same thing because they're changing what's currently called their industrial maintenance program into a mechatronics program next year as well. And I'm hoping that our students will be completers and then go to Florence Darlington Tech and get the robotics piece. Because chances are, we're not going to have time to cover all of the other things that I've already mentioned and get to the robotics with high school students, unless they come back for a third or a fourth semester. Not everybody can do that. One other thing I want to mention to you that I think is very important is we need to investigate the, uh, the way that we can help students with careers in the automotive industry. The state of South Carolina, automotive industry is blowing up right now. And that's not just BMW and Volvo, but the new Scout EV plant that's coming, that's coming to Columbia is, uh, might be, I think I read that it's the largest investment in South Carolina history. And there's going to be upwards of three thousand employees there. The new AESE envision battery facility in Florence is going to employ nearly twelve hundred people. And I looked today and the employees at their Kentucky or Tennessee facility are starting out at fifty-five to sixty thousand and many go well beyond that. They're going to hire a lot of engineers and technicians. They're also advertising for machinists and CNC operators, tool and die, welders. And so a lot of the programs that we currently have are, could feed into that. But right now in South Carolina, there are no EV programs in any CTE center. There are some automotive, there are some automotive programs that go into it a little bit. And we've got an opportunity to get on the ground floor if, if we can specialize in that going forward. Just a couple of things about the future. Right now, we've got over eleven hundred requests for courses at DCIT next year. Some of those are duplicates, so it won't, it wouldn't be eleven hundred individual students. Because some students want to come to two different programs. If they've completed most of their graduation requirements, they want to come do, you know, welding and machine tool. And I can fit them into the schedule. I'll do that. We like to have as many completers as possible, but, but if we've got a senior in good standing, I try to fit them in where I can. We're going to add some with mechatronics. There's no students in the mechatronics classes currently because they weren't there starting back in October when we were doing IGP's. But counselors are aware of the program. I've been advertising it and I think we're going to fill them nicely. One other thing, this is going to be our last year offering project lead the way engineering. We're not getting away from engineering, but we're going to specialize in mechanical design, which is what we offered at DCIT for years. Our teacher, that is her special, specialization. She, she was a drafter. And that would also allow us the scheduling flexibility to add a standalone drone pilot class. Over the last three years, we've had eight or ten students who have earned their drone pilot license through what, through the, through the curriculum that we've taught in our aerospace engineering class. But we'd love to have it as a standalone class. So some of those, we'd get, the state is working right now on a completer pathway. It doesn't exist yet, but we could offer it as an innovative course in the future until that happens. But I think that would be really great. I think there's so many different ways that students can have careers in drone technology, not just flying them, but also making them and, and programming and things like that. Want to mention one other thing, our ag mechanics and horticulture. We're doing really well. Many of you have been by and picked up some plants and vegetables from the, from the greenhouse. Every spring, we do our plant flower show. The greenhouse is falling apart. Every year, we're spending thousands and thousands of dollars on upkeep with Band-Aids. So we really are going to need to consider a new greenhouse. It's popular as the program is. And especially with the communities coming in to, to purchase plants and flowers. That's something that, that we'll need to discuss going forward. I apologize if I'm rambling. Does anybody have any questions about DCIT?
What are our current offerings? I mean, you've named some that you've kind of gone through.
We have auto tech, auto collision, electricity, carpentry, engineering, uh, machine tool, welding, graphic communications and digital art design, which are very similar. Business, finance and marketing, an assortment of classes. We have IT, including networking, cybersecurity and computer programming. We have health science. We have ag mechanics and horticulture. And we're adding mechatronics. I think that's all. I don't think I, I don't think I missed anything.
What's holding us back most at DCIT?
In, in terms of what we're doing right now, there's no major problem that's holding us back. We'd like to add more programs. We don't have more space.
So that's the problem, our space.
We're, we're, we're full. We're using, as of next year, when we add mechatronics in where mechanical design used to be, that'll be all the classrooms and all the space. And so that would be great. I'd love to add more programs. Everybody always asks me about culinary and cosmetology, but then there's also early childhood education. There's, um, there's firefighting, law enforcement. There are a number of different things that we could discuss that would take a significant investment, though it would take adding to the facility. But there, there have been smaller issues. There were scheduling issues that were fixed immediately when Dr. Newman came in. We've worked hard every year with the school counselors to get them to understand what the programs are and what courses students need in the pathways. And we've really reached them. I have great lines of communication with the counselors at all the schools. I'd love to get more students from MAO. It can be tough. I'd love to get more students from Hart School who are part of the IP program, but that's very, very difficult with the schedule flexibility. But.
What percentage of, or do you have a number of students that, that leave us and either go to Florence Darlington Tech versus how many go straight into the workforce related to something that they did at DCIT?
I can get to that. I do have that information because we have to turn it in every year to the state. Well, we turn it in ten months later.
Right.
We, we.
I guess what I'm trying to say is how, how, because that to me is like, how good a job are we doing with workforce development for the, our students that, you know, are not heading into a four-year career path?
A, a huge.
College.
Yes, a huge number of them are progressing in a way that we would like. They're either at a two-year, four-year school or straight into the workforce. Not all the ones in the workforce are doing something related to what they did at DCIT. I'd like to improve that a little bit, but we're in the neighborhood of only two to five percent of students who aren't doing one of those three things. Very few DCIT completers are sitting on the couch, not doing anything. And the ones that we know of, we communicate with. Their former teachers talk to them and let them know when they see job openings and things like that. So we're definitely at least getting them motivated to be employed. I'd like to see a few more of them go into the field.
Because your, your battery operator who you just said in Kentucky is making, starting out at fifty-five, that's a mid-career teacher salary.
That's exactly right.
With no college loans to pay back. So.
You know, the, the, the average employee at Nucor is making somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty to ninety thousand dollars. That, that's amazing. And there are opportunities. And it's not easy to be eighteen years old and walk on at Nucor, but that doesn't mean you can't get there within a couple of years.
I mean, I, I just, I, I'd like to see this program made more, you know, that this is, since I've been on the board, there's been a strong push of mine. I mean, I think our thinking and, and you, the scheduling obviously helped the programs immensely. But I think the thought that we're, hopefully, we are now bending away from that arc of that you have to have a four-year degree in order to be successful. And then the more we build out our programming and our job opportunities and build up this, this workforce development, I think the better we are, we are, we will be able to like provide for our industry here in the county.
But that's, that's, that's crucial. And, and they.
I mean, so I'm a huge advocate. I'm, I'm, you know.
Sorry. My, my communication with the industry representatives in this area has been very, very positive. They, even the ones that don't take a lot of students directly out of high school, love what we're doing. And when they come visit us, they're always very impressed with the programs we have, with the technology that exists there, the facility, the equipment that, that we have. They, I have people all the time say that they've seen, you know, technical colleges that don't look like they have the, the technology, the infrastructure that we have there. I know that we're doing a good job preparing students. I think what Shannon does is the next step, getting, getting, not just DCIT kids, but all of them out, getting that work experience. I tell them at the beginning of every year, we hope that what we're doing is, is showing you what you want to do for the rest of your life. But if not, then I certainly hope we're showing you what you don't want to do for the rest of your life. So you can make the right choice going forward.
So I've, I've actually been involved with the industry side of things since inception, fifteen, twenty years. I've been a big part of that area, in large part from the other side, which is business and industry and their needs. You know, we've fought back and forth. We've brought them in. We've talked and we've listened to them, what are their needs? We want to change our curriculum to cater more cater towards our local industry and business and their needs. You said you think that we're doing that now better. Are you hearing the business and industry complain or still requesting, are we not meeting those needs? Are we more aligned with their needs?
I think we're much.
I hear all the things you're saying that we're doing, but I haven't been back to another meeting again where all these people, unfortunately, I was hearing it all the time.
Right.
And you can't give everything to everybody. And I was saying, okay, would you prefer we go down to Charles and go here? No, I feel we have an obligation to this local area. So that's who I'm most concerned with from a business perspective. Are we providing skills that they need and want now?
The, the two biggest areas in this area that, that need the workers are in manufacturing and healthcare. And we are producing a lot of students that have the skills to go into manufacturing and healthcare. Either directly in, out of DCIT or with some additional training and education.
Right. So in, then kind of a follow-up to that, which I can't answer, I don't know if you guys and your communication with people in the state, is there any conversation of changing the requirements that we pushed for a hundred years to where, to graduate?
Twenty-four D units.
While we're pushing and continuing to come again?
Twenty-four D units.
Yeah. And instead of, you say, well, they can only take so many, you got to graduate, you get more mail.
Yeah. Are we pushing anything? Does anybody doing anything to change that where you can have two paths as opposed to we all have to go this way? And my big fight, my big push with you is, we got to get out to these counselors. You say, you know, you got a really good relationship with the school's counselors to try to, it's not necessarily encourage this and take school or school system, but, but it's opening their eyes to this opportunity. I mean, honestly, I've said this, y'all have heard, it's going to blue in the face. My child took a couple, she wished she could take every course there because it was relatable and it was jobs, she could see the, the end, so to speak. So, but our country continues to push this one way. What are we doing? What can we do to fight that to give us two paths? Am I making sense?
You are. And I, and I have not heard any push in South Carolina to make a change like that, but I know in other states that has been discussed.
When you look in Europe, I mean, I mean, it is that model and the engineering opportunities they've got.
And Jamie, I think to your point too, like the, the progress education, business, you know, committee that's been meeting. So I've been meeting, Shannon and I have been meeting regularly with Nucor, Hog Precision, Duke Energy and Fiber Industries. Those four have been the core ones. Sunoco has also been in there recently as well. Ongoing, almost every six weeks, six to eight weeks meetings that we're having about addressing, are we addressing the needs? Are we? And some really good conversations have come out of that. For example, from, from a curriculum standpoint, math, right? So right now, the pathway is algebra one, geometry, algebra two, prop and stats, right? That's it. If you're a high school student, that's what you do. Well, if seventy percent of our kids aren't going to a four-year college, why are we pushing the same math for all of our kids?
What percentage does any of that math have to do with the majority of your needs in society?
So, so that, that's, we started tackling that six, eight months ago with this group and with Florence Darlington Tech. So now we've come up with a, a manufacturing-oriented math work-related path course for students. So instead of having to do that algebra one, algebra two, geometry, prop and stats, they don't. So that, that's been a big bonus. And, and everybody around the table from our business sector said, yes. That's, we need kids that can use tools to measure things.
But add to track multiple fractions, percentages, et cetera.
We, we don't need the prop and stats piece, for example. So, and plus, think about the kids that aren't on a path to do anything except go to work. They, they don't want to take a math class their fourth year that doesn't relate to what they're doing. And so this, we actually have two math options now. So we have a ninth grade math option and a twelfth grade math option that are geared towards business and the applications, the math applications. And what's great is some of the, you're going to hear about a program we're doing with our eighth graders. And what's great is some of the, you're going to hear about a program we're doing with our eighth graders where our businesses are talking with our eighth grade students, saying, here's what you need to take. Here's what we need. And great feedback from the kids saying, that's what I want to take because they told me that's what I need to take at the business, not at school, but at the business. So you're starting to see some change with that. But I can tell you that, that again, if you, you talk with Louis Brown, Economic Development, he's on, he sits on that committee as well. They feel like we finally have a consistent push right now to come up with innovative ways to help workforce development, bring more involved. The, the counselor piece, we have talked, we have really talked through, how do we get them involved? More importantly, how do we get teachers involved? So Shannon, I'm stealing a little bit of thunder here, but one of the things that we're putting together is a lunch and learn with our businesses and our teachers the week that they come back. So we're, we're taking one of those days for lunch, and it's not mandatory, but it's a lunch and learn where Duke Energy gets to talk about, here's all of the careers we provide your students. Here's what we do for your community as good citizens. Sunoco, here's what jobs are available. Here's what we do in your community to make it better for you. Because we all agree, sitting at that table, teachers and parents are the key. Because a, a teacher that has a student that they know has a skill can help push them towards something. But if they don't know what's out there, they're not going to say anything, right? So we're almost trying to layer in on top of school counselors, because there's, there's only one school counselor for, you know, hundreds of kids. But a teacher has students that they know that they can talk to. And what's sad is fifteen years ago, you weren't allowed to talk about two different tracks. You, because, you know, you can't, can't talk about tracks, can't talk about paths. Everybody has the same path. They have to go to college. Well, now everybody realizes, hmm, that's, that's not the way this is going to work. So. We're, we're, there is. And, and we're coming up with new ways, like with, with these think-take sessions that we come up with, we're trying new ideas. I don't mind going to the state and saying, look, we're, we're going to try something different because this is what's best.
Who goes to say, why can't we go to say, to really petition for these things? Because I mean, again, like you say, whether it be some of the sciences, some of the maths, some of the English. I mean, again, there, there are skills that are needed. We should be teaching, they could be better in where they want to go.
Yeah.
And at all times, it's.
Doesn't fit that cookie-covered mold they put us in a few years ago, ten, fifteen years ago. So.
They, they want to, they want to prevent students from making decisions early in high school that would prevent them from being able to change their mind later. And that can happen.
Yep.
Uh, you know, otherwise I think the technical colleges would push for a technical diploma for somebody who's coming to Florence Darlington Tech or Middlelands Tech, take these classes.
I'd love that.
And I, I see nothing wrong with that, other than the people who would say, well, ninth and tenth graders don't know what they want to do and they, they make decisions and then they.
You want them to have choices at the end of high school, but there's a balance there, I guess, right?
Yep.
So, you know, we, you know, I mentioned the counselors, we've, I have a good relationship with them and I feel like there's good information going both ways. But counselors still have a little heat on them too, because nobody wants to be that person who tells a high school student they're not college material. You know what I mean? And I'm not saying that's valid. I'm just saying that they don't want to be the one that ten or twenty years later, that person says, well, yeah, I had this counselor who told me I wasn't smart enough to go to college. And that's not what it's about. It's about having a good career. It's about having a, making a good living and, and being happy and.
And I'd never say that. That is not how I would present that ever. I would never want my counselors doing that. I'm just saying in the past, we've never offered, we've never pushed, we've never promoted like we promote the other. Give it a fair chance, guys. Put it on the table. This is what we got. This is the path. This is what it takes to get there. Second right is this option. So no, I would never discourage anything, but we just didn't do a good enough job of pushing skills. And, and I think that's now hurting our society overall.
I'm, I'm excited that, you know, my, I've hired Jennifer Dunn to be the new assistant director at DCIT, and she's coming from a counselor position at Hart School High. And she has told me that the information is there. The counselors all have the information they need, but individual counselors still sometimes have biases that, that, you know, depending on, maybe it's the student and the parents that they're dealing with because they know. And so instead of, instead of providing them all the information, hey, you really should look at this, you really should look at this, they just kind of go with the flow because it's easier. Like Dr. Newman said, they've got four hundred students to do IGP's for. But, um, but we're, we're getting a lot better. And I feel like we're, we're going down the right path.
I'd like to make sure that we celebrate what you do too. Because I mean, I just, I just attended all these graduations, right? I mean, we really celebrate those kids that make good test scores and all A's and all these things. I would love to find ways to make sure that we're celebrating, you know, so that, so that perception-wise, you know, we're celebrating everybody in there.
Elevate them.
Yeah, right. And so that we're not.
Well, we do, we do try to do things.
And we're not, counselors aren't feeling that they're being measured by those numbers of the amount of scholarship money and the amount of the SAT scores and all these things that I think counselors probably feel, you know, I would guess.
I'm, I'm sure that they do.
They're picking up on that, that we, that we celebrate those kinds of things and they want to be part of that celebration. So we need to find ways to celebrate what you do.
They, they, I, I would, I would, I would argue that, that the amount of scholarship money doesn't matter as much if somebody else is paying for your college anyway.
That's right.
And, and that's what happens with a lot of people who go into a career path.
And that, I mean, that's a statement I make all the time. As people say, are you against, you know, kids going to college? No, I'm just for somebody else paying for it. You know, I'd rather them get into a career and then allow somebody else to take that debt on for them, allow them to get either training or college moving forward. But yeah, I, you know, there were some impressive, at, at your completer ceremony, there were some impressive kids that walked up and got awards and certificates. I mean, I've seen them here in this room for athletics as being all-state or all-something. Same kids, and I've seen academically them being in this room. And then there are also completers in your building. And I'm, I'm sitting there thinking, that's probably one of the best well-rounded students that we can offer out there to somebody.
There was a young lady here from MAO who won the Stand Award for two different schools this year and one when she was in elementary school. And she was an engineering completer at DCIT.
And she, yeah, accelerated.
Yep.
I think another thing we need to do, you know, our student kind of role that's going down, this is a good recruiting tool. Private schools, private schools, they don't have this. I mean, we can use this to attract more students.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Next we have Key to Careers, and that's the Shannon question.
Yep. So how do we need to help you get connected, or? You good?
Good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm just going to be providing a little update about some of the things that come out of my office with business engagement. This year, some of my goals were to increase community engagement and our program recognition, expand Key to Career and engage more elementary and middle school students. That first goal, I completed Leadership Hart School this year. I was put on the First Steps Teacher, uh, Parents as Teachers Committee to represent the school district. I've completed several different presentations for the Byerly Foundation, for the Kiwanis Club. So I've been very active in the community, making sure that we get that message out there that there are various pathways for our students. Expanding Key to Career, you'll hear a little bit more about that in just a moment. Engage more elementary and middle school students. I helped assist Sunoco with their PAWS mentoring program and the Darlington County Humane Society to get them into Bay, Bay Road Elementary School. I also assisted the Red Cross with their Pillow Case Project in our elementary schools. And then we are working on the Ascend Program, which I'll also tell you a little bit more about. So for Key to Career this year, we had ninety-five interns that signed their pledges. From those ninety-five students, and that's for the entire academic year, we had eighty-one that fully completed. We had a few students that had different things that happened. We had one that had a medical issue that prevented her from completing her internship. We had a couple that had some other issues where we had to remove them from the program, but we did have eighty-one of them complete and ninety-five signed. Those students earned a hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars this year. They worked nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six hours. Fifty-one employers participated in the program this year, and with those fifty-one, eighteen, eighteen were first-time participants. So we had five new participants in the fall and thirteen in the spring. Our participants ranged from manufacturing and healthcare to public service, firefighters, working for the city of Hart School, the city of Darlington. We have a wide range. We have landscapers. We have people working with, with welding, CNAs, and just about anything you can imagine, we've got them out there doing it. Forty-four of the students that we had this year were asked to continue working in some capacity. What that means is that they were either asked to continue their internship for an additional semester or they were hired on part-time or full-time. We do have several of our students who've been hired on full-time right after graduation that are already working in that field. We have three this year that were hired in childcare. We have one that was hired as a Darlington County firefighter, and we have two that were hired at Fiber Industries over the last year. There is a four-point-four average intern final evaluation score. The state requires that students score at least a three on a five scale for them to get credit for their internship. Our average score is four-point-four. Students reported back when they're surveyed at the end that their most-used skills are technology, communication, collaboration, and safety skills. One of the things that they're learning particularly in manufacturing very early on is that when you come onto the job site, there are particular ways you have to keep yourself and the people that are around you are safe. And that's one of the very first things they learn when they walk through the door. Seventy-six percent of our employers state that interns interview as well as or better than working adults in the field. So I added this to the survey because I was told repeatedly when they came in for their interview day that we hosted here, some of these, some of these students, they interview as well as adults that I'm trying to hire. So I was interested to see how many of them had that opinion, and I added it to our end-of-the-year survey, and seventy-six percent of those said that. Ninety-six percent of our employers rate the Key to Career program as excellent. The feedback that we're getting from our employers is that our students are well-trained in their four weeks that they spend in the pre-employment training where we talk about the soft skills, we talk about communication, we talk about ways to collaborate, conflict resolution. We work on those types of things with them for four weeks, the career specialists and their counselors, and I go in and do some workshops with them. And at the end of that, before they go on to the job site, they already kind of have this little foundation that they've built, and then they're assigned a mentor, and they work with their mentor for at least twelve weeks. So, so far since the program began in two thousand and nineteen, and this is including almost two semesters that really had no students at all in it because of COVID, two hundred and fifty-three student interns have completed internships. They've earned three hundred and one thousand, ninety-six dollars with seventy-eight different business partners. And as of now, fifty-four percent of the interns that have ever participated in the Key to Career were asked to continue on in their internship, either as a part-time, full-time employee or an extended internship afterwards. So last year, Mr. Smith and I met with some representatives from the Harbor Freight Fellowships Initiative. So Harbor Freight Fellowship, essentially, they want to support students going into the trades. They're part of that conversation and trying to change the way that we look at the trades as employment opportunities. What they do is they recognize extraordinary students. A lot of times they are underserved students, women in non-traditional fields, students of color that are considered less than twenty-five percent of the population of a particular workforce. And they provide them with a thousand-dollar cash scholarship if they spend at least a hundred and twenty hours working with a mentor in a particular trade. So we met last year and decided that we wanted to be a part of their pilot for our area. And we had our first completer, Ms. Raven Newsom. She's a Hart School High School and DCIT graduate in automotive technology. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-two, this past fall, she was selected as the Harbor Freight Fellow. She worked almost two hundred hours with her mentor at an auto body shop. Raven was the sole person doing their oil changes. She was doing tire rotations. Just about anything that is general maintenance on a car, she was in the shop doing it. She got her thousand dollars. Her mentor was also awarded five hundred dollars from Harbor Freight. Raven has also presented many times on the Key to Career program and her Harbor Freight Fellowship. She's presented to the Byerly Foundation, the Child and Family Resource Center. She was recognized with other program fellows on May fourth at the Global Workforce Summit. And Raven has also been selected by the state of South Carolina as the technology champion for the P D region.
Might I add, she's incredibly impressive.
She really is.
I mean, I, I've seen her present to business community and adults, and every one of them say, can we hire her? After those conversations.
So it's some other accolades that students in the program have received. We had two of our students from Lamar High School, Kumori CPO and Taishan White. They interned with S L Barno Funeral Directors. Mr. Barno was so impressed with these two students, he asked if he could give them five hundred dollar scholarships and presented them to them on their awards night. In addition to Raven's state recognition, Darlington High School student and DCIT graduate, McKinnon Blaze Hicks was also recognized by the South Carolina Department of Education. He was chosen as the Work-Based Learning Student of the Year for the P D region, and he will be recognized at the Education and Business Summit at the end of this month.
Where did he work, where was he?
Technology.
He was Darlington County School District Technology Office. In January, the Key to Career program was awarded a thousand-dollar grant from the Kiwanis Club of Hart School to assist in transportation needs and to fund positions for students that would normally be unpaid. We had two students, they're twin sisters at Tin Mayo High School, and they really wanted to be in a pharmacy program. And I could not locate a pharmacy that would assist them because most of the pharmacies either had corporate restrictions on paying interns, only wanted to hire college interns, or they were a smaller business and didn't have the funds themselves to pay it. So we were able to use this money to assist them with transportation and also have them paid for forty hours of work apiece at Lamar Family Pharmacy, so they were able to complete the internship that they needed. Some of our barriers and challenges this year, the current economy did kind of slow things down for us. We had several of our manufacturing partners in particular that were unable to participate. They kind of put a temporary hold on their participation in the program, and these are longtime partners. They had to, you know, do playoffs and cuts within their organization or they had to cut out their second shift, which is where our students would normally work, which led to them not being able to take interns this semester. Additionally, more and more, I have people saying, I would love to take an intern, but we don't have the money in our budget to pay. Particularly if they're in the nonprofit sector or if they're a small business. An example that I've given is I had someone who really wanted to get into wedding planning. That was her dream job. But most wedding planners are small business operations and they cannot afford to pay an intern. So those are some of the challenges that we're running into with the economic issues. Our other one is continuing conversation that we've had for the past couple of semesters, transportation is difficult. The majority of our students that need this kind of program are students that do not have the financial support to be able to get themselves back and forth to work. So previously, Dr. Newman and I agreed that I would transport some of the interns. Of course, that takes me out of the office and away from what I'm doing. So this past semester, we said, you know, students had to provide their own transportation, which meant that once that money that we got from the Kiwanis was gone, that we lost several interns because of that. We are currently pursuing partnership with the P D Regional Transportation Authority and the Byerly Foundation. Right now, we don't know what the outcome of that's going to be, but we are pursuing it.
And also on that note, we, even our faith-based community, you know, they said, how can we help? And we said, we, we need people to transport kids. I mean, the, the kids most in need of this program are the ones that typically don't have transportation. And so they even said, well, we'll help, we'll put some people together to see how we can get it, and it never materialized, even with our faith-based group, unfortunately. And it never materialized, even with our faith-based group, unfortunately.
And the main reason for that ended up being liability. They went, some of them went to their congregations and said, you know, this is a real need and there were people that wanted to do it. But at the end of the day, the liability is a huge issue for them. So the other big program that we're working on with our eighth graders is something that we're calling the ASCEND Program, which stands for Advanced Career, Advanced Student Career in the
Exploration.
Exploration. Advanced Student Career Exploration and Needs Development. It ASCEND for short. So the Darlington County Progress Board started these discussions with Dr. Newman and Quinetta and several others a couple of years ago. And then part of those discussions, there came the Workforce Development Committee and even another subcommittee, which is Workforce Development Education Committee. And through those conversations with those committees, one of the things that came out was that students don't know what is available to them in our county. And not just high school students, the earlier that we can get students to understand that there are Fortune 500 companies right here in Darlington County, that they can be an engineer right here in Darlington County, that they can be a nuclear engineer right here in Darlington County. The more they learn about those things early, the more likely they are to pursue those pathways. Because up until that point, they're just thinking about academics. And once they get to high school, a lot of times, they've already chosen a path without knowing what their options are. So that goes back to the conversation that you guys were having a little bit earlier. We want these students to know as soon as possible what their potential options are out there for careers. So we took sixty DCSD eighth-grade students. We split them into four groups. There were four cohorts of fifteen in this pilot program. We had four local manufacturing partners, Duke Energy, Fiber Industries, HOG Precision, and Nucor Steel. And once a month during the spring semester, these students rotated and visited these industries. There were tours. There were, some of them made keychains. And with HOG Precision, they actually got to run the machine and make their own keychain. And they visited Nucor Steel and got to see a miniature fire kiln where they are actually melting down things. And of course, the students weren't allowed to touch that, but they got to see those kinds of things and pique their interest. They were also told that, you know, the average income, because the students will ask, hey, how much money you make here? That Nucor's average income is around a hundred thousand dollars. So of course, their interest was piqued there as well. Some of the simulations that they completed, they really enjoyed. And the outcome of this is that students left excited about what they were learning, about what's going on here in our county. I want to take just a moment and show you we completed. Footage, talked to some students to kind of see what their experience has been like. And we created four videos that will be combined into one kind of promotional video for ASCEND, but four individual videos. This was the video for Nucor Steel.
And they actually asked for these videos.
Yes.
So they can post them on their social media. I mean, they are so excited about this program. I mean, they kept saying, we need them younger, we need them younger, we need them younger. And so that was a direct result of us putting this program together with the pilot. And I mean, go ahead. I don't want to steal any numbers here, but they want more, is all I can tell you.
They want more. And we surveyed the businesses. We surveyed the students. We've surveyed the counselors and career specialists that are working with these students in the schools. And overwhelmingly, there is positive response on all fronts. Students, a hundred percent of the students that participated said, other students need to do this. Because the students are walking away thinking about what they want to take in high school when before they had no idea. They just knew that they were going to sit down with someone and get registered for classes. Now, because Danny Hogs stood in front of them and said, this is the class that I need you to take if you want to do this job, they're going back to school and saying, this is the class I want to take in high school. So these students really learned a lot, not just from what they saw, but from the actual conversations that they had from people who are running these organizations. All of the partners, all four partners are on board to continue and expand participation. The Education, Workforce and Education Committee meeting that we had last week, there was a lot of discussion about the expansion and who was going to come into it. Sanoco is already on board. We have several others who've been asking to be a part of the program. We're projecting to expand to at least two-hundred eighth graders into next semester with at least ten business partners. Thinking ten to twelve. The official guidelines and program policies, Dr. Newman and I are working on this summer to kind of help identify what students would benefit the most from this program. But it's not a closed program. It's open to any student who shows interest, which is one of the things that we got from the feedback. The students were going back telling their families and telling their friends about these visits. Then other students were going to their teachers and counselors saying, hey, can I go to the next ASCEND visit? With this being our pilot, I think that, you know, we had a pretty successful semester and everybody's looking forward to seeing what happens with our next step up. And maybe eventually, this program will be able to touch all eighth graders as they're going into ninth grade. And these teacher lunch and learns that we're doing, those teachers in ninth grade will then be able to help them build on that interest if they have it. And then they can move into DCIT or the Key to Career Internship Program. I just want to say thank you to all of you for your time and your support of the program. If there's any questions, I can answer.
I do. I have one.
Sure.
What is the current criteria to be able to like participate in the ASCEND program?
In the ASCEND program? So we spoke with the counselors and career specialists and we just told them that this is a pilot. We started with just Hart School Middle School and Darlington Middle School and we asked each group to choose thirty students at random that didn't have any discipline issues, that weren't behind in their schoolwork, so that we could just kind of see what the response was. Going forward, we'd like to target students that aren't necessarily on the four-year college track, but some of those students, there are opportunities for them there too. So it just depends on the student.
I mean, have we looked at, I mean, I know we're extending our DCIS.
DCIS.
DCIS. Down into our middle and elementary school. I mean, to me, that also should be a target population because if they could see that there's something else for them in the future. I mean, sometimes I think, they're not academic students. I mean, but they may be phenomenal with their hands and see things that we can't see. But they're, the discipline is getting in the way. And I think sometimes we need to give them
A push.
Give them some goal to reach for and I
So our businesses ironically are saying the same thing. Now that they've seen what, you know, at first they said, hey, juniors is seniors. This is great. This is great. And they said, women, we need to get to them sooner. Because they don't, you know, if we can get to them sooner, we can make plans in high school for them to be, you know, moving towards this instead of last minute. We just finished the eighth graders. Then they're like, you know, we got to get this down to elementary schools because if we get this down to elementary schools, two-year-olds point the exposure, giving them something motivated that they can look at. More importantly, their parents and letting, you know, their parents know what the opportunities are that are out there. So
They start to see those real-life applications of what they're learning.
The wheels are turning on the younger ones too. So I think that would be a natural next step of another program for younger students.
I know it's, I know that our tough is kids, but we still have a responsibility to them and we need to be setting them up for success.
I think there's a lot of talent in those students, like you said. I think academically too, it's just, you've got to make that connection. It's just like, you take a look at the DCIT school, the facility, the physical plant itself, maintenance-wise, they have less to do on that facility than they do the others. Why? Because the kids are interested in what they're doing. They're not, ones that are causing problems are those that are disinterested. So those kids are interested. They're going there for a reason. They chose to go there. They're enjoying what they're doing. They're engaged. Likewise, the students that are causing problems that go to DCIS, I bet a large part, majority of them could be just as successful if they were engaged, if they found something of interest. And this shows you the end result because like if I look at trigonometry, there is no way I can see the end result of that, okay? But if I can get in here and see what's happening there and you get into these companies and see what they're doing and that you're making money, what it takes to get money, like Danny said, you know, you got to take this to get it. I can do that then. I think that's huge. Yes, all areas of our school, but DCIS without a question. We said that years ago. That's an area we want to touch with.
And I would love to see some type of program for those students because I absolutely agree that they need that exposure, even if it's not in this same format because of the time and attention that will have to be given individually to the students. But one thing that we can consider is just like Key to Career, if we have students that don't quite meet the guidelines, you know, part of the program with the recommendation from their principal or from a counselor, they're still able to participate. And one of what I consider the biggest successes of that was a student in the fall that his older brother had just gone to jail for gang violence. He had been suspected of being part of a gang. And he came back after his brother went to prison and said, I've got to do something. Help me do something. And he was able to talk to his counselor and he got into the Key to Career Program and did a wonderful job in the fall in the Key to Career Program. And now he's in the military. He left and went to the military. But it's just someone saying, okay, you know, if you want to change this, we're going to give you a shot. And he went in and he worked and he got what he needed.
You know, I mean, as we talk about like changing the way we interact in the programs for our students at DCIS that we've talked about several times, it always sounds like this is a program that can be, that can be built into that, specific for that population.
Yes.
But even, always push, always come back to the other side of that. Even the valedictorian, even the most academically engaged student, I want him in this. Why? Because he needs to see what we have locally. I go back to economic development for local, to keep our economy thriving here. He goes off to Harvard Yale, gets a master's, PhD and so on. So he comes back to one of these companies likewise to bring other things. So I want, I want from A to Z to go to be exposed. I've always said, in these rural areas, my kids, I always say it all the time, they have no idea what's available out there, what it takes to do certain things. So it's all about exposure. I've always said, let's load them on the buses. Let's run them around. And this is a program at eighth grade. Yeah, I think definitely eighth grade. I don't like the ninth, eleven, twelve. I think the eighth grade is where you get the interest, while they still have a chance to develop themselves and take that path that they have to take.
I agree with you a hundred percent. I think all students should be exposed to it. So because regardless, I mean, just because you can go to a four-year college doesn't mean that you should. I mean, think about how many people go to four-year colleges and then don't do the thing that they went to college for. I mean, how many of these people are in this room? I mean, we all need exposure to those things. So have you thought about like ways to bring this kind of program into the schools? Because you're not going to be able to take all the kids out. I mean, or maybe you will eventually with the eighth grade, but ways to bring
Well, we do have, have different people come into our schools. I help set up career fairs or visits and that sort of thing. But what's different about this is them actually being able to see.
Right. And that is impactful, but how do you get to those other kids? When the ones you, rather than giving them nothing, they get something.
They hold fairs out there. They run all these people in there and they go through a thing, which is awesome. But I've said, still, you can touch it, feel it and see it. They can only bring so much in that classroom, I understand, but getting them there, that is a
That's one of the elementary kids. We're at Darlington Middle.
How many did you?
Just roughly.
About three hundred and forty.
How many?
Three hundred and forty.
Eighth graders.
Eighth graders.
Okay, so we're looking at roughly seven hundred, probably across the district.
Seven hundred and seventeen eighth graders.
Across the district.
So how do we get to that place?
So that's what our business partners are asking us, right? And so again, the conversation's great because at first it was like, I mean, if y'all would have been at some of these interim meetings where they were like, those kids didn't, didn't listen and those kids didn't say this the way we expected them to say it, right? We had some of those meetings, but they quickly figured out what teachers already know. If they're not engaged, they're not listening. And so the folks that stood up there and just did a PowerPoint for forty minutes, it didn't go well for them at first. But they learned quickly, listening to the people in the room and what they, we did, we did robots. We did this. We did that. Okay. And then those same people, the next time went, it was awesome. Those kids were so great. That was the best group I've ever seen.
So we're with the teachers because that's one of the things, like when I saw career days in elementary school with my kids, like the things that intrigued the kids were not a PowerPoint presentation. It's when the people would bring, like I saw one of them, somebody, they did a hands-on activity where they groomed pets or something. At one of the elementary schools this past spring, you know, like bring the puppies in and groom them and whatever. But something where you can interact with those kids. But that brings it to the school, which is probably, you know, if there's a combination of things we can do.
And so one thing we, a number that got thrown out was four hundred, right? What if we could get four hundred eighth graders in a given year through this? Well, we decided it was going to take at least, I think, twelve to fifteen businesses to get to the two hundred that we're at. They've got to recruit the businesses, right? So that annual progress meeting that's in November, you're going to see a big push towards this ASCEND program and signing up more businesses. Because when they hear somebody like Duke Energy and Nucor and HOG say, here's what we experienced and how we gained from it, then it's easier for them to sign on. But if you just tell, like I was saying, you know, they were saying, yeah, we just need to go ahead and sign all these people on. And I'm like, look, if they don't know what they're getting into, they're going to have that same result.
You got to coach them and work with them.
You got to work. You got to set it up right, you know, it's got to be done right. You got to have the right people that are doing it. But if you do all that, the end result is the payoff that you're going to get with these kids, so.
And this was just the pilot. We were just testing the waters to see how it would go. And it was so successful that we're just going to keep going. And if we don't hit all seven to eight hundred of them in the next year, that is the eventual goal. We don't want to just
What's the cost of this program?
Transportation. That's been it. I mean, because the businesses are providing lunch. They're providing, you know, all the activities. It's for a half-day. So we want to make sure it's only, they're only missing a half-day of school once a month. And so if transportation's it, you know, you got to have a bus driver and a bus and fuel to transport it. That's what I was telling them is, you know, we put fifteen kids on the bus, we can fit forty-five on comfortably. So let's bump up all four of those to forty-five kids. But not every business, they're not, well, we don't want forty-five. We want fifteen at one time.
But you could drop them off.
We got to map it out, right? So we've got to get businesses that are in the same facility where we can just drop off fifteen, but have a busload of forty-five, right? Now, those are the conversations that we're starting to have. So it's, the wheels are turning once you, once you get some, you know, data back and you have some success, so.
And absolutely, just wanted to mention that Lamar will be included as we're moving forward. It was simply because we were having this as a pilot program that we only included the two larger schools, but all schools will be included next year.
Okay. Very good.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. At least as to our goals, okay? Dr. Newman, I want to turn this over to you.
We still got a lot of stuff to get through, don't we? There's a budget in here somewhere, isn't there? That's what I was thinking. Okay. So I'll be quick with my goals and update then. The Community Safety Task Force did meet back in May. We had approximately forty students. Mr. Govan and Mrs. Gore represented us there. And thankfully, they were there because there was only one other member of all those people that signed up to be on that task force there. So the school district had double the amount that anybody else had. But it was very insightful as far as what the students had to say. They were elementary age to high school age, good conversations, definitely recognized the need to do it more so they can build the numbers of students and build the number of adults that are listening to it. But I would say, you know, Audrey, it was enlightening what those students had to say. And I mean, I made the comment that, you know, we have to listen to our students. That was something, we've listened to a lot of adults, but those students have some really credible information to talk about and their fears that they have. So, but anyways, there is talks already about how to do the next one. So, but anyways, there, there is talks already about how to do the next one and how to involve more students. And of course, for, for our committee to have more people participate, so. The mental health supports, we're actually exploring a, a new model that's a telehealth model that I think Greenville County actually piloted this year, and we're looking at a smaller scale of it, but it could actually give us on-demand resources instead of having a full person and a full salary associated with it. So, Dr. McCall has been in conversations with Greenville County, with the vendor and, and talking with our schools as well. So, we're exploring what that could potentially look like and, and possibly not have to hire people to do that as, as much as having on-demand and then having the professionals assist after that. As far as parental guardian support, registration for next school year is in full swing. It is completely electronic, we have made that transition. We are continuing to message, I'd say we have about a third of the students registered as of today that we need registered. So, we're continuing to go out from a PR standpoint, we're putting together some activities where our transportation department is gonna try to get out there with school buses and iPads in our communities to try to connect with them in a way that they normally don't connect, but also a way to build up the, the registration numbers. Again, we are messaging the parents, if you have not registered your child online, if you're an existing Darlington County parent that you've had children in school, if, if they're not registered online, they will not be able to attend the first day of school. You'll have to wait until after school to get them registered at that time.
What's the holdup? Just curious.
Um, procrastination.
When do they have it till?
June twenty-sixth, but, you know, that, that's, like I said, we've got a third of them registered. Now, each week, more and more of them get registered, but it, it's just the, the, the lack of urgency. But, I mean, we've been pretty clear the past couple of years, if they're not registered by that first day, they, they don't get to come to school.
How well? Earlier registration, did you end up getting, like what percentage of them actually registered at the time?
I would say probably eighty-five percent. And then, again, the, the folks realized that they couldn't walk in the door and clog up the offices with, you know, in-person registration. They had to wait until after school, that, that had a big impact on folks, so.
So, we expect it to get a lot better than a third here in the next couple of weeks?
Yes.
Well, that and your school just letting out, a lot of families going on vacation.
That's right, people are just unplugging.
Everybody's taking a breath for a minute before.
People unplugging. That's right. And then also, we have, already our schools are planning some back-to-school events to connect with their community, right? They're thinking earlier times, we haven't really been able to do that the past few years, so. And then, of course, the last is academic achievement. We've finished all, of course, our testing, we're waiting on our test scores to come back. Hopefully, this year will be July. You know, each year it's bumped up a little bit closer to the summertime. I remember a couple of years ago, it was November. And, and, you know, that's too late to really be looking at what you do for the school year. So, we're hoping early July that we get those test scores back so we can start disaggregating and, and talking with our schools about it. And that's the goals update for the month.
All right, next we'll move to budget reports, our federal funds, anybody have any questions from Mrs. Douglas? Douglas, you have anything to add?
Business situation, trying to wrap up the year, so.
All right.
So, I understand, oh, oh, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was like, is this the point where I could do that? The state, so I understand the state budget still hasn't passed.
That's a different budget document, this one, this is just.
Oh, we're talking about it, yeah, we're getting, we're going there next, yes. The state budget, that's what we're figuring, no, you're good, we're finished.
I got it.
That's what we're getting ready to discuss, so I'll, I'll use that as a segue.
Segue right on over.
Sorry.
The State Department, I hear they had an animated meeting on Wednesday, I didn't watch that one, but they, they said it was the craziest they've seen ever. And then on Thursday, they came back that afternoon and made peace and, and passed something. So, they, they passed a balanced budget. We do not yet know which version they included for us. They finally made a decision where they're going, Clemson University will have a veterinarian school. They passed the twenty-five hundred dollar per sale teacher raise. They mentioned the one percent.
Funded or unfunded? Funded or unfunded?
Personally funded.
Yeah, it's, they think it's funded, but that's, that's in question. But the new funding model makes it difficult for me to determine, or them to determine either. They mentioned the one percent retirement cost, but they are supposed to reconvene this coming Wednesday and we should get more details as to whether they chose the Senate version or the House version or a hybrid version, or whether they took more money and, and gave us more. So, what we are proposing for our final second reading is the Senate version, which gave us about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars more in revenue than the first reading version. We've got a two thousand dollar per sale increase for our teachers plus a step. And then we've got a two percent base salary increase for all other employees plus a step, which equates to about three and a half to four percent total increase. We've rolled in all the funds that they're, they've rolled up into the general fund this year. We took those list of positions that you've all looked at and we've added those. And right now, we're, we're leaving the excess in a reserve one until we find out what they're gonna do next week. There's a good chance we will have to come back and amend the bottom line, but it just depends on what they do. If they, if it's close, then, you know, we can adjust our reserve and, and move on with the same bottom line. But we should know something Wednesday. So, what we're proposing here doesn't look much different than what you looked at the first reading of them. There's a little bit more money because the Senate version, the Senate version of the funding model, they, they gave us a little bit more, so.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the second reading?
Motion to approve second reading?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions?
The reserve, I noticed on the documents you provided, the reserve, that reserve could be truly reserved to help us with next year's ESR transition or no?
Yeah.
Is that how that works?
Potentially, yeah, yeah, that, that was the whole purpose. You know, obviously, because of inflation, you know, there's the cost of supplies, a lot of things are kind of in, in that mix. But our thought was to help address what's gonna happen next year. We need to be, we needed to start preparing this year for that, and so.
Hopefully, that will be something that could help us a little bit.
Yep.
Tiny bit.
And so, you know, that, I would call that prioritizing money, you know? And to Jamie's point earlier, we have to be careful about, you know, less and less of that available. But, but yeah, at this moment, unless something changes at the state level, we have some prioritizing money to be able to help with some positions next year that are gonna, that there won't be any funding for, so.
Any other questions? I'll call for a vote on this one. That's the last round? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, Dr. Newman, do you have anything else you'd like to add or?
The only thing I have, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a quiet, I'm almost afraid to say that, it's a quieter time, but it's a busy time for planning that we're in right now. But the one update that I do have, our technology department won a, an award from, it's called One Ed Tech Consortium, and it's basically a worldwide collaborative about ed tech, educational technology and learning. This was at the Learning Impact Conference last week. The district received the One Ed Tech Award, which is for organizations that are leading the way in creating innovative, open and trusted technology ecosystems that empower learners from an instructional technology standpoint. With a lot of the applications we have, the way we vet software, the way we vet apps, the, the, the protocols that we've been putting in place, the return on investment that we're starting to dig into for any type of system that we are, are looking at purchasing or that currently exists. Also Hannah Teal won an individual leadership award for curriculum innovation and teaching strategies. And if, if you all know Hannah, instructional technology, she's done tons of videos and, you know, I, I think back during those times during COVID where we were trying to train teachers how to do online learning, and Hannah was at the forefront of that. She's been, you know, a front runner for us as a district, but also at the state level. And so, kudos to her. Also, of course, we have summer feeding sites that are up and running. I've seen, you know, other districts talk about their, their feeding students, well, we are too. You know, we are required to feed any student that is eighteen or under.
Yeah.
Yeah, under eighteen.
Yeah.
If they desire food. And so, we do have sites set up in each community for that, with ours that are set up for that. And of course, we have summer school that's going on, month of June, elementaries are two weeks. High school and middle schools are three and a half weeks, is that right, Eddie? Am I saying that right?
Summer's.
Yep.
So, elementary is four weeks.
Four weeks.
Right.
Thank you.
Middle, high school, three.
There it is, thank you. So, the fourth, but it's the month of June primarily, yeah. Because then teachers come back the fourth week of July, so it's fast.
It's all kind of shocking to see the buses out and about, you know, that early in the mornings.
I know.
Still.
But that, that's everything that I have for the superintendent's update.
Any questions for Dr. Newman? All right, gonna move on board input, Mrs. Gore, I'm gonna let you lead us off.
Okay. I have so much to talk about, but I'm gonna narrow it down tonight. Well, as my, my first year, I have been enjoying myself. I had the opportunity to go to Mayo High School graduation, Darlington High graduation and Roswell graduation. I just wanted to give a shout out to Roswell and the principal there and their staff. The graduation was so nice and I really enjoyed myself. And I enjoy how they are preparing the, the students that are coming over to Darlington Middle School. Because you gotta understand, they're coming from a small place and now they're coming over to Darlington Middle School. Some of the children are very, very happy and I think you're gonna get some good after weeks out of that school. There was some tall, there were some very tall young, a couple of tall young men. So, I was trying to recruit, I said, "Y'all wanna play basketball or football?" Well, I think they're looking forward to coming over here and I think Dr. Mason over there's done a great job. They invited me to their sneaker ball, but I didn't wanna go. I should have gone, but, because it was so nice, I saw the pictures, but I, I wasn't able to handle it. But, and the piggyback on what Dr. Newman said with the meeting we had with the students, that meeting was, was an eye-opener to us and we gave the children the opportunity to talk. Because we, like he said, we're putting forth a task force that, that trying to figure out what we can do to help the children. And so, we got a chance to hear some of them talk. Dr. Newman, they were real, real, what we call real, they were very real with us. And, and they said things to us that, that showed their fear of what's going on. They have some fear about it as well and they're, and they're welcoming what we're doing and they're welcoming the interest that we have it. So, I'm sure at our next, the next meeting for the task force, I think you're gonna have more children to participate. And there were young men there than females, but, so we're hoping that we get a, a good mixture of the students that come there. And the program you did, Ms. Flowers, that's a real good program. I'm glad I got some information on it tonight. And when I was listening to you talk and I was thinking about what's going on in the community, I'm saying this program can help us save a lot of children. And I appreciate the work you do and your staff and the career counselors. And I'm looking forward to maybe asking some businesses that I know own, that I know own businesses to come in and help us with this program. You know, my husband owns a business, so I'm gonna ask him, will he come in and consider? And you know, another good program, um, that, that we might could look in for children is real estate. Real estate is a very lucrative field to go into. So, I like that program. And on, and at DCIS, is there a career counselor there, is there a staff there? There is, okay, because I was saying that, you know, so these kids have the opportunity to get exposed. I really think they need, like you said, exposure. So, we're gonna try to figure out how we're gonna get these kids exposed. Even if we have to bring some churches in, our, our nonprofit, our other community organizations. Because by any means necessary, we need to bring students to acknowledge both these programs because there are a lot of good kids out there, you know, and I think that we could probably save, they do have a little behavior, but like you said, I don't really have to agree with Jamie, but I, but I kinda agree with you a little bit on that. But we do need a path. We need a path. And if that path is what it takes to save our children, we need to look at it seriously and see what we can do to help, to help children. Because like you said, you know, some kids are real good and, you know, have all types of talent. And, and we don't know what they have and we will never give them an opportunity to, to do it. But if that's what it takes to save a child, to give him a career path with his life, that's something we need to try to look into and see what we can do on, to help these children. Because I don't, I don't wanna see no, no other children lost. I don't wanna see that anymore. I don't want, I hate to see, when I see young people lost with no career path, I hate to see that. Well, that's, that's going on, so whatever we can do to stop that, I'm all for it. Whatever we can do to help our children, I'm all for it. And I'm gonna stop that. I'm doing it. Y'all can clap. Now, man.
I'm here with my time. I'm good. I'm good to give it up.
Ms. Kelly? Ms. Morpheus? Ms. Thompson?
Everybody's just passing. Well, you got a lot of good things to say, Audrey, you're, you sit there quietly and take it all in and I love it. And then you, and then you pour out your heart, all the things that you're listening to, and I love that. I guess just congratulations to all the graduates, right? I mean, we just went through all that, congratulations to all those kids, to the DCI completers, to the adult ed graduates, to all the different students that we serve in our county that are, that are making their way out into their adult, the next phase of their life that we prepare. And I, I second Audrey, I love hearing what you guys are doing. I think the board wholeheartedly agrees with what you're doing. And I think society is getting behind what you're, you know, where you're headed. And we have the right momentum, as you said, like starting to get that, that critical mass to make, to make some movement. So, so thank you for all that you guys do. The other thing I heard tonight is just listening to our students, not just about safety. I think our students are incredible and they're gonna tell you, they're gonna be real. They're gonna tell you things you don't wanna hear, but they're gonna be honest and truthful and give you their perspective. And I think we need to do more of it. I'd love to see our board interact with students more. And I don't know exactly what that looks like, but if we can think of opportunities to do that more, that would be wonderful.
I think that's all I have tonight, really. Audrey said it all, thank you, girl.
Audrey said it all.
Ms. Jefferson?
Congratulations to all our winners, especially our all-A students for twelve years, that's just, I mean, that's hard to do, guys. That's something, a very great accomplishment. How about our vacancies? Uh, how about our vacancies? How are we doing?
Twenty-six teacher vacancies, uh, and only five of those are special ed right now. So that's a number that's a good bit lower than it has been.
So how are we comparing this year to last year? Are we better off?
Better, much better than we were this time last year. Yes, sir.
Good deal. Good deal. All right. How fast is it?
Um, I got something I wanna bring up and, um, it's maybe a little controversial. That's not good. Um, I was part of the board when we made the decision to allow cell phones in our schools. The original proposal for that was to be used, that there were, you know, augment, there would be augmentation in the classroom for, you know, it was back before we really had, we were completely at one-to-one technology. And as time has progressed, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that was the right decision. And I think it's time that we, the board, as a board, revisit that decision. Um, I think cell phones have become a major distraction. I see Mr. Sharp, they're doing a soft nod. Um, I, I think some of the discipline problems that we have seen, especially this year, are problems that are perpetuated and increased by the availability of cell phones. Um, as far as distraction goes, they are in constant, whether it's in their pocket, there's this constant need for a constant check. And I think we just need to sit back, look at the research about the influence, in particular, social media is having on our students. Um, but primarily with learning and the distraction that these are now causing with learning. We have the, we have one-to-one technology for all of our students. We don't need their device to access some of the things that at one point we did. And so as we move forward into the next year, as we move forward and think, as a board, I would hope this is something that we will bring up. Um, Dr. Newman, I would request maybe that you bring this to your principals, get some feedback from the principals. See what they, their thoughts and feelings of it. Principals can get some feedback from their teachers. Um, but I think it's something that responsibly we need to look at.
Madam Chair, you know, we've actually got a policy about it.
We do have a policy, but we have kind of red zones, green zones, where you can have the phone out, where you, where you're not supposed to have the phone.
Um, per the policy, you know, primary or elementary students not allowed to have them or use them while on school property or attend school-related activities. Um, whether on or off school property during the regular school day. And I've actually witnessed that while on a field trip. You know, it was flat out told, you know, Dr. Bridges flat out told those students. If they have it, it better not be visible. Um, and then middle school and high school, you know, they're allowed to use it, you know, up until the beginning of the school day.
And they can use it at lunch and they all have it in their pockets. I mean, they still have it. I, I mean.
I think we go back to pulling repercussions of them not following the policy. Confiscation.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, I, I, I personally think that we just need to look at the policy in general. And I think getting feedback from our principals, who get feedback from the teachers, to see if this is something that we really need to, because, I mean, I think we're seeing to the detriment educationally and to the detriment of our students' mental health, what these devices are causing.
You said it's a bit controversial. I think without question it will. And yes, there is a policy, but we have not been enforcing the policy. But I think reviewing it, like you say, with feedback from the principals, from the teachers. Because, you know, before we did not have a lot of history, a lot of, uh, studies. There was not information. We assumed that there were gonna be implications for continual use of screen time. And now every day, getting in that car to go to work and I have two different stations. I listen to two different views of news. And both stations are always talking now about studies, 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 and what it's showing with screen time, discipline, social skills, et cetera. And I think, no, hell, yes. And my wife obviously is dealing with this every day in her, one of her other jobs. And I hear it all the time. And I see my own kids even to this day, you've got to be kidding me. They, they cannot detach themselves.
They cannot.
No matter how they try.
Cause the algorithms are set to draw them in.
Um, and, and as an adult, I do the same. Now I lay my thing, I pull up a shrimp box on the way to work. You can touch it for about forty minutes. This is ridiculous. You get to work, you, you can deal with it. But seriously, the studies now, so I say, are we changing? We're gonna say we're changing. We are taking a look at it. We need to get information from studies, reports. What is it doing? What are the impact? What's it had? There's a lot of studies out there.
Correct.
And, and again, yes, it'll be controversial. Yes, but it's, oh, don't go there. We can't enforce it. Not enough. Teachers are like, oh, put one more thing on us. But.
But there are now devices, pouches that they can be put in, that they can be blocked. I mean, there are things that were available to us now that were not available. When we put that policy in place six or seven years ago.
That little section. I, I don't know, but, but li- listen to some things I've listened to, uh, it's scary. I mean, it is absolutely scary.
I don't think it'll be as controversial as you think with, with some parents. I mean, it will be controversial. That'll be, but, but I mean, I think a lot of parents are starting to understand that, too.
Well, what they're saying, that's all I'm hearing, these studies on these kids and what's happening with them. And yeah, we figured, we said, wait, give it ten years and see what happens. And, and it, information's out there. So again.
Well, you know better, do better, right? So now we've been.
I, we, I think for the time being, our next step would be, I mean, like I would, I think there's some census from the board that Dr. Newman to follow through with his, with the principals who could touch base with their teachers.
Sure.
Okay. Um, I don't have anything else to add to that. Uh, so we'll move on to personnel actions. Do I have a motion to approve personnel actions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve personnel actions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have here an executive session. Kind of get a motion approved to go into executive session.
Yeah. I make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters and contractual matters.
Yeah, I will say.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now in executive.
Interchange a motion to come out of executive session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we come out of executive session.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? No actions, no were taken, no votes were held. Motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I make a motion adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We adjourn.